Okay, do we? Are we on? Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me? We're still getting used to this new, these new hall. So that's, Ray, did she say we can go, the computer? She said we can go? We're still, we still provide streaming so people can do Zoom or watch from their home. So we have to make sure that they're online and they have an opportunity to participate and ask questions if they need to. So we're still doing that. This is all, you know, post-COVID world, right? Different, different things are in place. So with that, I'd like to open tonight's meeting and welcome everyone. It is Thursday, December 7th, 6:30 PM. And I'd like to welcome you to the regular council meeting for the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Can you all stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance? Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are present this evening.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
With that, we're starting out with something very special and important. That's the recognition of our first annual photo contest winners. I guess a couple of years ago, we embarked on a program where we decided to kind of formalize and create arts and public places policy for the village. And this is kind of an extension of that because what we're looking to do is, is over a period of time, create some kind of work where we can show the different pictures of Royal Palm Beach kind of in action. And we thought the best way to capture that was to have our citizens participate and take pictures of what's going on around Royal Palm Beach and send that into us. And we're looking to create a collection over, you know, as time goes forward. So tonight represents our first annual event of having the contest. And we have three winners that we'll be recognizing this evening. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Radoski because I get the pleasure of standing down out front and handing out certificates. I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Radoski to read the information we need to know about each participant.
Awesome. So recently, the village held its first ever photo contest where residents and visitors alike were asked to submit their photos of people, places, and things showcasing the village of Royal Palm Beach. The contest was very successful and we received nearly 100 entries. So thank you, everyone who participated. There were a lot of excellent photos. And this evening, we would like to formally congratulate our top three winners for their photo contributions, which will also be displayed in Village Hall as part of our art and public places program. Before we get to the winners, I want to just thank our sponsors. Minto Echo Car Wash and Terra Verney Realtor with Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, as well as our judging panel, Mr. Mario Lopez Bazani, Ms. Sharon Almeida, and Ms. Shakira Thomas. Okay, so starting in third place, congratulations to Grant Hawes with his photo titled Challenger Park Sunrise. Okay, in second place, congratulations to Lucy Vasquez with her photo titled July 4th at Commons Park. Okay, and in first place, huge congratulations to Anna Powers with her photo titled Spring in Challenger Park.
Okay, so we're going to be doing this annually. I'm looking forward to this. And maybe now we'll get even more people to want to participate and see your artwork, right? In terms of how you see the Village of Royal Palm Beach. It's really exciting. And thank you all who already participated. Okay, moving right along. Tonight I have to read something called the Mayor's Proclamation regarding the election season that's coming up upon us. So as provided for in section 8-1 of the Code of Ordinances of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, I hereby proclaim that on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, the Village of Royal Palm Beach will hold its municipal election. Groups 1, 3, and Mayor will be elected for a term of two years each. The election will be held on Tuesday, March 29th, as I said, March, I'm sorry, March 19th, 2024, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM at various locations in the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, namely the Village Recreation Center, the Cultural Center, Madison Green Country Club, Royal Palm Beach Community High School, Royal Palm Beach Library, H.L. Johnson Elementary School, Commons Park, South Florida Fairgrounds, and Calypso Bay Water Park, proclaim on the seventh day of December 2023. So let the record show, we have an election coming. Okay, that brings us to our reports. And Jen, we'll start with you tonight.
Okay, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I recently attended the League of Cities Legislative Policy Committee for Environmental Issues. And the priority for this year is to ratify the legislative statewide stormwater rule. So the draft policy statement is the Florida League of Cities supports legislation to ratify the Department of Environmental Protections' proposed environmental resource permitting rules for stormwater design operation regulations. That's the one we've been talking about in committee. And it was, it was easily agreed by the committee. And then the priority position is the Florida League of Cities supports legislation to clarify that the term "local government" under the property assessed Clean Energy Pace Program, that PACE program we've been talking about, means a county, a municipality, dependent special district, or an intergovernmental entity that has jurisdiction only within the boundaries of the participating members of the interlocal agreement. And remember, this policy was to prohibit organizations who thought they were interlocal from going in other counties than the ones they were originally assigned. So this will hopefully curb some of that predatory attacks on residents and seniors with their roofs or home improvements. So those are the two priorities for the environmental committee. Yep.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Just before we came to the chambers tonight, Councilman Valentes and I had the pleasure of actually participating in the opening ceremony comments from the principal of H.L. Johnson Elementary School, who was actually kicking things off for their second of two nights, that they have put on a holiday program, which apparently has been a tremendous success. When we drove in, the parking lots were nearly full. And, and so as we got up to the stage, we could see that it looked almost, almost like what we see for Winterfest. I mean, it was not quite those numbers, but the, the audience was fully into it. The kids were certainly into it. And so it's a great event. It's a great thing to approve, look forward to doing more of this, using our amphitheater, which is spectacular setting. And then, of course, we throw in a beautiful Christmas tree, 30-foot-high Christmas tree. It can't really set the stage, if you will, better than, than that for the kids singing Christmas songs and that type of thing. So it was a great night and it's one of two. And I brought copies of the program that I'll, I'll give to Diane and she can, she can hand them out to everybody. Speaking of the League of Cities, the Palm Beach County League of Cities had their November general membership meeting. And of course, this time of the year, we get the results of the read for the record. As some of you may know, there's an event that takes place every year. It's at a national level where one book, a children's book, read to pre-K, first grade, second graders throughout the country on the same day, kind of an interesting thing. And we've been involved in this for almost 10 years now. And one of the things that the League of Cities does is sets up a little competition between the 39 municipalities to see how many readers we can get to read to how many kids. And this year's winners were for the large cities, Wellington, who had 22 readers reading to 3,615 kids. And then in the medium-sized city, it was the Palm Springs won that one. And they had over 2,000 kids read to. And the small city was Lantana, who also had over 2,000 kids read to. This year, we kind of dropped a little bit. And so I think maybe we can kind of raise the bar in our target next year to see if we can get up to where we've been in the past, which was about 1,700, actually, we did one year. And see if we can get more people involved. It's a great event. It is, it is definitely fun. And we did get a certificate of recognition for us actually participating in it. So next year, we're looking for something a little more substantial than a participation award. But anyway, it's a great event and anything you can do to encourage kids to read. And if you show that you're excited about reading, they'll be excited about reading. And so it's a great event. Also, at this month's League of Cities meeting, our guest speaker was the Director of Palm Beach County Library System, Doug Crane. His presentation was interesting because I thought what we were going to get was some overview of the system, what's going on, the plans for the future. No, actually, his presentation was called Rising Above the Fray. And it was a presentation, a really well-done presentation on civility. I've got copies of the PowerPoints and I'll, again, provide them to our clerk and she can share them. I think they're worthwhile ideas to take a look at. And there is pretty much a general consensus that we have, unfortunately, over the last 10 years or so, become less civil as a society. And there was an attempt to identify what the sources might be, but more importantly, what we might do about it. So it's an interesting presentation. It's worthwhile reading. And so we'll, we'll provide copies to, to everybody who may not have had a chance to actually attend that meeting. Certainly, the holiday season, we've already acknowledged one of the holiday events. Unfortunately, we missed the Winterfest and tree lighting. But I'd like to think we get an excused absence since our son was being married on that, that day. And I'll tell you, given that choice again, I'd make the same choice.
You made the right choice.
We absolutely had, had a ball. It was wonderful to get the family together around such a great occasion. But I understand also that the Winterfest was a huge success again this year. So congratulations to Parks and Rec for doing such a great job every year at every event. Just keep up doing the, the good work that we've seen done in the past. And I wanted to mention one other thing, and that is that, that we have League of Cities' December meeting, which will be in the Glades. And I mentioned that once before, but I just remind everybody, that'll be tomorrow and it'll be at 11:30. So if you, if you have time to show up, it is a worthwhile activity. It's a chance to informally get together and talk about a little bit of business, but also share the holiday experience. So one reminder, we're all asked to bring an unwrapped gift for the youth in the Glades community. So once again, that will be tomorrow and look forward to that. One other thing, we, Dresswood Middle School is doing their Career Day tomorrow as well. So this typical season, everything on top of everything on top of everything, busy, positive, wonderful stuff. So I wish everybody a happy holiday.
Okay.
Just to follow up on one of the things Jeff said, the principal, principal motto from H.L. Johnson, repeatedly thank you, Mayor, and the rest of council for providing them with the opportunity to put on their, their winter concert. And as Jeff said, I was impressed with the turnout. I mean, it was a lot of kids out there, so all their family members got to go and they didn't have the problem in parking that they had up at the school. And secondly, just to tell everyone up here, I'm pretty sure May 15th is going to be the graduation date for Royal Palm Beach High School. So if you can put it on your calendar way ahead of time, hopefully the whole council can make it. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
I guess, listening to your feedback on the turnout answered the question because one of the questions we had when it came to us was, well, you guys could use the Cultural Center for this, right? And they said, well, no, we don't think it's going to be big enough. Sounds like they were correct. And that's, that's good news, but good, I'm glad to turn out that.
And it's neat because it's a two-day event as well. So you just saw one night. It's a two-day event. So they've grown, so congratulations to the school. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to welcome our new Director of Parks and Rec, Mark Palowski. So thank you very much for joining us. I always joke around that it's fun to have somebody from the north move to the south in the wintertime. So I'm sure it was a difficult decision for you, but thank you for joining us. We did have a successful winter event. We had about 18,000 people there. So we checked out and saw between everybody, driving, riding, walking. So it was a great turnout. Also, as a reminder, that you can meet Santa from December 9th and the 16th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM over the Sporting Center. So that's free to take pictures out there. The Royal Palm Beach Community Band Holiday Concert is December 13th at 7:00 PM over at the Cultural Center, and that's free to attend also. We have a concert tomorrow night at Commons Park. It's 30 Hertz, which is a Jimmy Buffett tribute band. And on next Saturday is our movie night, Bad Guys, December 16th. We have the annual Martin Luther King Day Celebration coming up. That is on January 15th over at the Cultural Center. That's also a free event to attend. Our youth soccer program has exploded this year. So we have over 250 players playing in the competitive program and over 550 in our rec program for fall. And both those numbers are records for them in attendance. So it's great to see how they've expanded. And also, congratulations to the U-18 Boys Team because they finished eighth in state. So they kept on going up tournament-wise, so congratulations to them. Our early childhood adventures preschool in the village was nominated for a Palm Beach County Community Choice Award in two separate categories, so in childcare and in preschool. So starting from the 15th of December to the 30th of December, you can vote online at yourchoiceawards.com/palmbeach. Today is December 7th, so I would like to just announce, remember those who lost their lives during the attack on Pearl Harbor this day in 1941. And finally, have a healthy, happy holiday and new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Right.
Councilman, took a little bit of my thunder from me when introducing our new Parks and Recreation Director, but go on up here, Mark. So we are, I feel very fortunate to get Mark on board. He did drive down here from Illinois this weekend. I think you said it just started snowing up there the week before. He had one snow. So he got out just in time. He comes here from Aurora, Illinois. He was the Executive Director in Winfield Park District for more than 25 years. He is a certified Parks and Rec professional, and we are very glad to have him on board. Thank you, Mark.
Just a few words, just want to let you know that I'm thrilled to be here. Within the first week, we've met a ton of people, staff, people in the community. It's great to see so many people in the parks, whether in the rec center, the cultural center, whether it be scheduled activities or just on their own. So, and as you mentioned before about the school concert being there, I was there two nights ago, saw the exact same report two nights ago as you guys saw tonight too. So it's great to see the park being used, especially by our local people. So, so as always, my door is open. You know how to get ahold of me. Don't hesitate to reach out to me. And, you know, I know I'm following loose footsteps and I feel very, very good about the people and the team that I got working with me to make sure that we keep moving forward and keep providing quality recreation and parks for our residents. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. I'll just wish everyone a happy holiday season and conclude my report with that for tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that concludes our reports. At this time, does anyone have a petition they'd like to present to the council? Now would be the time to do that. See, no petitions? No? So I'm going to close the floor tonight to petitions then. Now, with the statements from the public on non-agenda items and on consent agenda items, before I address the cards I have, Diane, do we have any advanced non-agenda items or consent agenda item requested?
No, Mayor.
We don't? Ray, do we have anyone with their hand raised out there?
No, Mayor.
Okay. I do have comment cards tonight for a non-gender item. So I'm going to proceed with that. And I'd like to call up Amana Ilaney. It's Anna, they put it, somebody wrote an M here, I'm sorry. I see you brought your fan club. Good evening, how are you? Is your mic on?
A green button, if you press it in the middle.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you. I'm here representing a group of concerned citizens. Could I have you guys rise? My group, can you rise, please? All right. Thank you so much. You can sit down. My name is Amina Alayyan. My address is 214 Las Palmas, Royal Palm Beach, Florida. I'm ready to start. You're ready.
You're ready to start.
Oh, no. Thank you. I'm going to start with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King. "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. For the last two months, the people of Gaza have endured one massacre after another with no end in sight. Many Palestinian-Americans have families in Gaza. We are worried to death for all of them. We're aghast, shocked, horrified, and traumatized by the horrific scenes out of Gaza every day. We can only imagine how they feel. Here's what one doctor from Gaza says, Dr. Abu Safiya. "We wish for death. It's easier than seeing the horrific scenes we're witnessing." At a UN Geneva briefing, Christian Lindmayer, a World Health Organization official, said this, I quote, "People in Gaza are dying in their thousands. And those alive are suffering from trauma, disease, lack of food and water. They need water, fuel, food, and safe access to health care to survive." Unquote. As if the Israeli bombardment is not enough, Israel has been withholding access to food, water, medicine, and basic necessities for survival. One reporter from Gaza says, "If we survive the bombardment, we will not starve of starvation." EuroMed Human Rights Monitor says, "Over 20,000 civilians have been killed in the last two months, where about half of them are children. 5,000 have been disabled, 40,000 injured. We're talking about over 160 children killed every single day. 1.8 million citizens Gazans have been displaced of the 2.5 million that reside there. All civilian infrastructure has been attacked repeatedly. There are no safe places in Gaza." Raz Segal, an Israeli expert, modern expert in modern genocide, says, "Gaza is a textbook case of genocide." Luis Morano Ocampo, a former ICC prosecutor, said, "The 16-year-old siege on Gaza alone qualifies as an act of genocide." Here's what Amnesty International says, "Israeli forces have demonstrated yet again a chilling indifference to the catastrophic toll on civilians of their ongoing relentless bombardment of the occupied Gaza Strip. The international community must act now to prevent Gaza from becoming a giant graveyard." I'm almost finished. "We believe, we believe it's everyone's moral duty to raise their voice and take a stand to stop this genocide. And this is why we are here. We're here to ask you to please, please introduce and endorse a resolution calling for a ceasefire, like so many other council, city councils have already done, to help us stop the genocide before Gaza becomes a giant graveyard." I will close with the words of Desmond Tutu. "If you are neutral in the situation of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." Thank you.
Thank you. Hold it, hold, sir. I have down a card here for Jeff Ilane, is that your husband? If you're going to continue with the same comment, something different? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Alayyan, 214 Las Palmas. I have an issue with the light on La Mancha in Las Palmas.
The light?
The light, the traffic light. If you, I leave usually early 5:00, 5:30, sometime 4:00 in the morning. You could stay there, go and check it out yourself, four minutes at least before it turned green. And once it turns green, before, like, just 10 feet down, it's already changing to, to...
It makes you wait a long time on red, then you have a short green.
Yes, yes.
That doesn't sound too good. Okay.
It's very bad. Sometime I have to go all the way west on Okochabi, turn around and go, and still haven't turned.
We will, we'll have our votes.
It's an issue. You know, you lose your frustration. You know, you go, go in the morning.
Believe me, I deal with the traffic. I, I get it, believe me, I do.
That's my issue.
That's, that's something we can do something about and we'll look into that. All right. But in terms of the prior comments, I just want to share with everyone that shortly after this awful event started to occur in this region, and we did have a moment of silence here at the Village of Royal Palm Beach several council meetings ago. And it is our wish that, we think it's awful to see the, the waste, traffic waste of civilians, innocent civilians, men, women, but especially the children, going through what they're going through. And we just hope that something, something can be done where peace can be gained and lives saved. So thank you for your comments. Sure, go ahead. We can't hear you. Well, we could have conversations, but unfortunately, we have no power over any of this that's going on, other than as citizens, we, and that's what, the point I'm making to you is, we did raise our voice when we had that moment of silence at an official, at an official council meeting. And we did make that statement. You're, this is a free country, do, you know, yes, you can. If you want to do something, you might want to make your, your concerns known to our local congressman. We have two congress, and continue to do that because this is something that, our members of Congress are in a place where they can do. Because this is something that, our members of Congress are in a place where they can do something about this now and try to help the situation. Okay? Okay. All right, and I applaud you for your, I applaud you for your voice in this, in this matter.
And every one of us as a human being must stand up and say, no, no.
And we are saying, we're saying, no, we don't want to see this discontinued, so. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, you're not getting any funding here, so I don't know. You don't, you don't have to show that slide here. No, I'm not, I'm not trying to make it funny. I'm just saying, this is way beyond our pay grade. I'm sorry to hear that, sir. Sorry to hear that.
No way. No way. You are the voices of the people. We appreciate everything you do, but you are our voices and we come to you with our agony. And she said we have no power. Everybody says we have no power. The power is in the people. The power is in you and me.
And the power is? Okay. Okay. With, please, no outbursts. We've heard, we've heard your comments and I think we've responded to it, so. No. I just want to let you know, Congressman, sir. No, it does not. That's a misconception. The fact of the matter is, all right, Congress wants to hear from the citizens. They want, they want to hear from local elected officials. They want to hear from you. We represent you for running the Village Royal Palm Beach. We don't, we can't represent you. It's before Congress. All right. I think those are fair points. I, I, listen, I understand completely where you're coming from and understanding your questions. Well, your voice is heard tonight, and we appreciate you sharing your voice. Say again, ma'am? There is, that's not how, that's not how this works, ma'am. I'm sorry to tell you that. Okay. We have other business to conduct. We need to move forward. Your representatives are in Washington DC when it comes to matters of state. And this is a matter of state. This is not a local Royal Palm Beach matter. We have you as a citizen, but you also as a citizen of the United States. And you have representation, hopefully that you voted for to represent you on the state level, on a national level. Okay, we're going in circles right now. Come on, let's stop, please. I, we, and we are sympathetic, we are very sympathetic to what you're saying. Ma'am, there's nothing more we can do. We are elected officials to run the business of the Village Royal Palm Beach, okay? This is a national issue and.
Our experience is to introduce a resolution that says, you know, we want a ceasefire.
We've made, we've made our, we've made, and we've asked for that already, all right? We don't have to issue a proclamation. Yeah. I have to go to the next agenda item, please. Okay? There are other people who also wanted to speak on other issues, so. You want an opportunity to leave out? Thank you. We thank you for your feedback and comments, and we do understand, believe me. Okay. We have another, we have another comment card on a non-agenda item from Martha Smith.
Think about if it was any other family member, just think what I'd do, please.
Okay.
What would I do if it was one of my family members, my mom was? A whole family was entirely wet.
Ma'am, we hear you. We understand. Okay. You've made your point. Thank you. I hear, I hear your point. I'm sorry. We'll continue from this point. Are you, Mrs. Smith?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Robert Love. I'm next, but we just gonna go and try to get it all out the way.
At once.
I'm sorry, sir, I can't hear. What'd you say?
He's the next guy.
You're Mr. Love?
Yes.
Yeah, you can sit, you don't have to stand there. You can sit down.
We're together.
You're all together? Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm Martha Smith, 171 Martin Circle.
Is the mic on?
It's on.
Got to get close to it.
You can hear me now?
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Martha Smith. I live at 171 Martin Circle, Royal Palm Beach. I have a family home daycare, and I'm here to speak for my daycare. I came in with my daycare with six kids, but I also had a large daycare, and I had to downgrade my daycare when I bought my house here. But I didn't know at the time when I bought my house, my daycare is going to be six. But the rules of home daycare, you can have 12 kids, but Royal Palm won't let you have 12. And I was coming to see why.
So you're saying, when you say the rules, what rules are you referring to?
The health department. But Royal Palm rules, you can't have but six.
What agency? You got to tell me the agency, what rules?
Palm Beach County says you can't.
That our Royal Palm Beach code ordinance says it only allows six kids in a home daycare, and that's our current, current code and policy.
Okay.
And she is correct that the state does allow more. The state, which is.
I want you to say that yourself, it was on the record, but okay.
And the county, the county that oversees the daycares does allow more than that. Our code does limit it to six in the neighborhoods.
So we're not, we're not consistent with county and state law?
It says Palm Beach County rules.
Okay, sir.
Well, we have, we have, we have the, we have always had the ability to have, have what we want. And we've, in our neighborhoods, we've always kept it to a minimum because of the impact the neighborhoods and traffic and employees and things like that. So that was the number we picked in 1989, and that is the number we have today.
But the rules changed since 1989. It's 34 years ago.
So what, Keith, what can we do with this? Is it, in 1989?
That's 34 years ago.
It was a different world then, but.
I mean, if the council wants to direct staff to look at this issue, we can certainly look at it. We can tell you what the parameters are, what the state maximums are, what the county does. And we, you know, we can let you know what your options are.
Yeah. I'd like to know what our options are, because when I was briefed on this initially, my thought was, gee, 1989 is.
That's 34 years ago.
The state allows a lot of different things. They, and the, and the department, right, I mean, there's, there's schools, there's preschools, there's, you know, and the numbers are all different. There's lots of different numbers. So the number that we pick is a number not based on what somebody else is choosing. It'll be a number on what we're comfortable with allowing in our neighborhoods.
Okay. So, so I just want to sum this up. So you have a daycare program? And you've been, how long have you been in operating?
Well, I've been doing this for 22 years.
And you've had more than six people for 22 years? Or you just decided?
Not here.
Here. I just.
She's been elsewhere. She moved to the village.
Someplace, house in the state? And you're new to the village?
Yeah. Yeah, the village.
You're from West Palm Beach? When did you come to the village? How long you been in the village?
I've been here since July 15, one year.
Okay, how did this come up now? What happened? What put this to the surface?
Because when I opened up my daycare.
Okay.
I didn't know.
You didn't know about that rule? Right.
No, no. Who would think that comes to say, hey? How many kids can I keep? Can I keep this amount of kids? But I'm working by everybody in Palm Beach County off the same rule. Everybody in Palm Beach County can have 12 kids. It's not something I made up.
Is that true? We're going to look into this, okay?
Yes, it's true.
Okay, we.
Municipalities do the same thing as the county.
No, all the municipalities pick different, their own numbers.
So everyone in Palm Beach County does not do the same thing. I would like to know what similar sized municipalities do.
Agency that oversees it allows for that, her particular type of daycare.
Right.
Preschool or whatever it is.
All the municipalities can set their own.
That she has. They set their own, and our knowledge is, a lot have, are set at six. But we have not done any recent research on that. We don't know.
Problem.
Yeah.
Here's the problem.
Go ahead.
Okay, I got a home right here. I got a home here. That's her daughter. I got a home right here. My home is right here.
Okay. Ma'am?
I got a home right here. Right up the street is a daycare that could have 50, 60 kids, because it's one of them kids. It's one of them daycares. Just the same daycare.
No, it's a different configuration. That's apples and ar, I hate to use that term.
Yeah, that is apples and ars when right up the street.
But they're both fruit. No.
Yeah, I'm saying they're both of them daycare.
Listen.
But you got the license to have 12 people.
We, okay. Keith, look into this. Ray, look into this. Do, you know, with the comparison, and come back with a recommendation. And the question I have is, should we reconsider what we currently have on our ordinance? Once we've looked at the landscape and looked at, you know, where things were in 1989 and where we are now? Because generally, we, we usually follow county and certainly state ordinances and these kind of things. So when I heard about this, I was a little surprised that, wow.
That's the same thing the health department said.
We will look in, we're going to look into this. We will, we will get back to you, okay?
May I ask a question real quick? Just for clarification, this is a daycare center that you're running in your home, correct? And what are the ages of the children, the lowest to the highest age-wise?
We have mixed age.
But, but is your youngest six months and you go up to three years? Do you go two days to?
No, you can go from, you can go to age 13.
Okay. So I'm asking, is the six children that you have now, what is their age range? What's the youngest child you have in your care?
One.
One. And what's the oldest?
Three.
Okay. And how many staff members do you have?
With six kids, you only need one staff member.
Okay. So this is what I wanted to ask for clarification. Okay. Thank you.
And then she buy a home thinking you gone.
You dropped my whole income.
That you been having it. Now you got six.
Well, listen, right? Here's where we are now. This isn't going back and saying what it should have, but.
Yeah.
We're looking to this and.
But you understand what I'm saying.
It will come down to a policy decision on how much you want to allow in the neighborhoods.
Okay. So give us a chance to take a look at this and figure out where we are on this, okay? What options we may have.
Thank you for moving to Royal Palm Beach.
Yeah, welcome to Royal Palm. Anyway.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. How long would that be? You don't.
Probably next meeting, perhaps?
I'm not sure there's a whole lot for us to look into.
Okay.
Like I said, this is a policy decision. If you have, if we go to 12, that's double the impact than the neighborhoods. If we go to eight, that's increased by 75%. So that, it's, it becomes a policy decision of what this council wants for this community.
Right. And I mean, I'd like to have the information on what other.
On the other communities.
Municipalities do. We already know what the state does. We know what the county does, but there's a lot of cities in Palm Beach County. And I'd like to know what, you know, Palm Springs is doing or Palm Beach Gardens, things somewhat similar to our size. And if they're at 12, then.
With the landscape really.
Right. So, okay. Thank you.
And part, part of what we, I think we'd benefit from is the understanding of the total impact that we're talking about. I know we're talking traffic, we're talking about, want to make sure we understand all of the things that need to be considered, that were considered when we established the six. So all of that taken together, I think would be useful information.
Let's all also add in how many other family daycares we have licensed by the health department in the village.
You got to run in homes or, okay, you got to run in homes. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. Okay. I have no other comment cards on items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda, but if anyone else would like to comment, now would be the time. Then I'm going to close the floor tonight to comments not on the agenda and to consent agenda items, and ask Diane to give us the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, public hearing to approve Resolution Number 23-51, a resolution of the Village Council of the Village Royal Palm Beach to adopt the updated 2023 Program for Public Information Document, Flood Insurance Promotion Plan and Flood Response Preparation Plan. Two, approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the co-location agreement between the Village Royal Palm Beach and Dish Wireless LLC regarding the cell tower site at 100 Suite Bay Lane. Three, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute an addendum to extend the Village Hall Architectural and Design Services Agreement with REG Architects Incorporated for an additional two years.
So, yeah, we completed the consent agenda. I'd like to pull item number one.
Item number one?
I move to approve item number two on the consent agenda.
Didn't we add?
We need to do number three.
Didn't we add one?
Yeah, there's three, there's three.
No, he wants to add. He approves.
Two and three, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? We have no polls. Diane, let the record show, the consent agenda was approved minus item one.
So item one having to do with the flood insurance program that we, that we have, and we've been working on it now for, gee, it's about 10 years. And the staff has done a remarkable job. And I thought this would be an opportunity to kind of remind all of us of how important this program is, progress we've made, and the benefits that derive to, to the residents in Royal Palm Beach. So Ray, or?
Yeah, I'll take care of it. Chris is with those other 400 and some people at the park with his daughter singing. He's listening and he's watching it, but. Yes, so.
Spectator.
He's in the right place.
I'll handle this. So the, the resolution that you're passing is a resolution adopting our public information document for the SRS, for the CRS rating program. Being part of that program and the elements we choose to do as part of that program gives us a class rating of six. With that class rating, it does give our residents that are in a special flood hazard area a 20% discount from their flood insurance. The program is a pretty intense program. There's a lot, a lot involved in, in your data and your drain, and keeping track of your drainage and your properties. And we do manage it within the engineering department.
I think it's a remarkable program. Also, if I remember correctly, anyone can look up their address and find out whether or not they're in a special flood hazard zone.
Yes, they can. They can go to our website, go to the engineering department, or just type in the, right in the front, what do you call it, the section where you type in what you're asking, the website? And, yeah, there's search section. And just type in.
Search, oh, okay.
Flood maps or FEMA or CRS or anything like that, and it'll find it.
That's particularly helpful for new people moving into the area, especially so. So with that said, then I will make a motion to approve consent agenda item number one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. We have no polls. Diane, let the record show that consent agenda item one was also approved five zero. Just a quick question, Ray. How often are they, are they updating the flood maps more frequently than they were before because of this?
No, they don't. They very infrequently update the maps because the overall drainage throughout the whole county doesn't change that much. That was an effort that was started some twenty years ago, and we've probably worked on it for over ten years. And then we've got our maps, and now what it is, is you can amend the maps if you do something, improve your site to a point where it changes and is worth amending. But the maps are finished by the federal government, and they finished those, I think, about ten years ago.
Okay. All right, so this is one of the outcomes of our, the floodwater program that we instituted several years ago to get us to a point where we had to get certification as a city to be able to get this benefit in place for the citizens.
And it's a very active, we have to be very active in the program to get the twenty percent discount for our residents. And what Councilman Hamara pointed out, the website, they'll type in your address. That's all part of the things they like to say, and they audit us. I don't, it's not every year, it's probably every, I think, every two or three years. I know they did, just did an audit within the last six months of making sure that we're doing everything within the building department, community development department, and the engineering department.
Given the landscape and what's going on with homeowners' insurance and now a lot of companies demanding homeowners look at having flood insurance, this is, I think, a very important plus for the village, so thanks.
Right.
Okay, we're gonna move now to our regular agenda this evening, and regular agenda item R one. It's a public hearing to consider application number two-three dash zero-nine-zero, high school marquee. The applicant, the school district of Palm Beach County, is requesting architectural approval to install a school board informational sign at Royal Palm Beach High School for a property located at one zero six zero zero Okeechobee Boulevard. This is a quasi judicial process, so the members have to be sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the applicant present? Can you come to the podium and state your name for the record, and I'll swear you and staff in at the same time?
Yes, good evening, happy holidays, everyone. For the record, Michael Owens, representing the school district of Palm Beach County.
Thank you, sir. Could you raise your right hand for me? And Bradford, you as well. Do you both swear from tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. I'll turn back to council for any ex parte disclosures.
We would staff and the principal.
Thank you.
Long time ago, the principal. Yeah. Okay, Bradford, you're up.
Okay, thank you. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to install, excuse me, a school board information sign at Royal Palm Beach High School for a property located at one zero six zero zero Okeechobee Boulevard. The proposed sign will be placed at the main entrance of the school, and it's circled here in red. Marquee sign complies with section twenty-five-seven, print seven. As it pertains to size and location, the applicant will also be required to adhere to the requirements of the section of the code for messaging time intervals of no less than ten seconds apart. Shall only be utilized for display information messages regarding public or nonprofit events and programs and activities for the school. And finally, the sign brightness. The planning zoning commission voted four to zero to approve this sign application, and staff is recommending approval. And here is an illustration of that sign. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The applicant like to make any comments?
No, we just wanted to say, you know, we've worked with staff over the last year, making amendments to your code, and just wanted to say thank you for, you know, allowing us for the opportunity to improve the situation here at the high school, and that we will abide by all of the code restrictions.
Okay, before we take comments from members on council, do we have any prior public comments on this agenda item?
Mayor.
Ray, does anyone have their hand raised on agenda item R one?
No, Mayor.
Okay. I have not received any comment, public comment cards on this agenda item, but if anyone here would like to comment, now would be the time. Saying none, I'm closing public comment on agenda item R one. Comments from members on council?
I just have a quick question. Is the current sign going to be removed once this new electronic one is going to be installed?
Yes, that one's been in disrepair for several years, so we can't wait to get rid of it.
Okay, thanks.
I would hope so. Good, Ray, go ahead, Jeff.
How did you wind up picking a location that really doesn't have much traffic first thing in the morning on a school day as opposed to kind of like where the sign is right now, the monument wall, wrap sign?
I think what happened with regards to that wall is that we wanted to move the sign and kind of get it to a place where drivers could see it, you know, coming in and going out. We did want to replace the digital sign with where it is currently. We just wanted it more kind of set back a bit and kind of more essentially located, so, and that wall, I believe, is going to come down as well.
Yeah, well, what I was talking about was, you know, the first couple of hours, the majority of the school day, there's no entrance there. Nobody's going in, nobody's coming out there, so.
Well, there's some vehicular traffic that'll come in from the front, because basically we'll have the buses coming off of Wildcat Way, I believe, and then we'll have, you know, most of the vehicular traffic comes off of the Okeechobee entrance.
Hey, those gates are closed, though, right?
During the day, yeah.
They're closed, yeah. Once school's in session, yeah, we close that, and then, of course, we open it. It's pretty much for dismissal and arrival.
I was just wondering why not out on, like, where the other sign is right now, kind of a thing. Was there some
I understand.
limitation that prevented putting it out?
I think, just wanted to change it up. I think with the advent of the technology, from when we had the original sign, we just wanted to make it bigger, more prominent, I guess, with, of course, within the boundaries of the code.
But we were able to actually get that sign put in. I think that's gonna be a big help to.
Yes, it's been two years of fun.
And my thought was, at least the way I saw the sign, you can now see it going both ways on Okeechobee and not have to, you know, be looking at it directly. Yeah, but you can, it's electronic. You can see it as you're going by it. It looked to me like it would be more visible, but if it's obstructed from the setback, then it won't, but.
Oh, it's good to have it.
Do you know the questions or comments from council? I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item number one.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no polls. Diane, please let the record show agenda item R one was approved five zero. Agenda item, regular agenda item R two is a public hearing to consider application number two-two dash seven-one. By the way, just quickly, what's your timeline to have that up and running?
I believe, according to the contractor, they're looking anywhere from eight to twelve weeks once they get the.
Oh, that could, okay.
So it should be done before the school year.
Before school year's over, yeah. All right, listen, good luck. It's been a long, long haul. Okay, public hearing to consider application number two-two dash seven-one, an application by CenterPoint Integrated Solutions. An adoption of resolution number two-three dash two-eight confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking site plan modifications and architectural approval in order to construct a standalone building which will be utilized for vehicle auction use building and vehicle staging area for a property situated within a general commercial zoning district and located at one zero five zero one Southern Boulevard. This is also a quasi judicial process, so we'll have to have folks warn it. How you doing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you state your name for the record?
Christina Belinky.
Thank you. Do you swear from tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am, and I'll turn back to council for any ex parte disclosures.
Steph.
Thank you very much.
You're up.
Great, thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting a site plan modification and architectural approval construct a second phase of development on the site, which includes construction of a new standalone building which will be utilized for vehicle auction use and a staging area for a property situated within the general commercial zoning district and located at one zero five zero one Southern Boulevard. The slide illustrates the site plan. Access to the site will be provided from two full access points off of one hundred and fifth Avenue North. In addition, there will be a cross-access connection with the shopping center to the east of the subject site. The purpose of the site plan modification is again to construct a two-point-six acre asphalt area to accommodate a vehicle auction and storage of the auction vehicles. The new four thousand two hundred and sixteen square foot standalone building area is highlighted here in red. The slide here represents the landscape plan, and this slide also illustrates a little bit better view of the new striping that was a point of contention at the last meeting. And then we also have the landscape terminal islands, which the applicant has provided. Here's the architectural rendering of the new auction building. In reviewing this application, bill of staff considered conformity with chapter twenty-six of the village's code of ordinances, specifically the project meets and requirements for the general commercial zoning district as it pertains to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, purview area, parking requirements, landscape areas, and maximum building height. And overall, the proposed site plan improvements meet all the village's requirements for this type of use within the general commercial zoning district. The planning zoning commission considered this application on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd like to make comments.
Hi, just real quickly, as you may recall, we were before you about three or so months ago, we had requested two waivers at that time. We've since very clearly heard the concerns that were raised by the council members during that meeting and have come back through with a compliant plan that has the striping and the landscape islands and the required landscape materials within those islands as well. We certainly appreciate your staff's ability to expedite that and get us back here so quickly because, you know, it was a modification to the plans, and they did work expeditiously to get us back before you, so we appreciate that as well, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, just sort of by saying thank you for your reconsideration and the dialogue we did have at the last meeting, and now you're back, and it looks like things are, look fine, I think. Diane, before I go to questions from council, we have any prior?
No, Mayor.
No prior public comments on this agenda item? Ray, any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R two, but if anyone here would like to comment, I'll give you that opportunity now. Saying none, I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R two. Take comments from member on council. If there are no questions, I'll look for a motion.
I just had a quick, for clarification, when we talk about the staging area for the auction, I know staff is driving the vehicles around in the front. Are the purchasers in the building looking down, or are they in the parking lot itself or in the back part?
The staging area, that's kind of the box, is only open, it's not open to the public, it's not open to anybody coming to the auction. It's only accessible by CarMax employees. So, the people visiting the auction will be going to the parking lot in the rear of that staging area. I don't know if we can bring up a site plan to help show that.
Thanks.
But essentially, you have that box in the center, and then as you go to the north side, there is circulation that can be circulated by members of the public, vehicles coming around that's separate from that enclosed staging area that has your standard parking for customers for those visiting the auction. And then there will be an entrance to the building from that parking area so that the members coming to the auction don't ever go into that staging area.
Okay, so, and that's what we're talking about, is the staging area, not the auction site itself?
Correct. The auctions are going to take place within that small building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number two.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no polls. Diane, let the record show agenda item R two is approved five zero. Good luck.
Your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Agenda item R three is a public hearing to consider application number two-three dash zero-nine-six, an application by J. Morton Plating and Landscaping Architecture, an adoption of resolution number two-three dash four-four confirming the council's action. Applicant is seeking site plan modifications in order to increase the outdoor seating square footage, update sidewalks, relocate the required art in public places, and modify the landscaping on-site for a property located at one one nine two five and one one nine three one Southern Boulevard situated within the Cypress Key Town Center MXD. This is a quasi judicial process, so we'll have to have folks warn it.
Can you state your name for the record?
Ms. Kinsey Bullock with J. Morton Plating and Landscape Architecture.
Thank you, ma'am. Could you raise your right hand for me, and I'll swear you, and do you swear from tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much, and I'll turn back to council for ex parte disclosures on this item.
Steph.
Thank you.
Okay, Bradford.
Great, thank you, Mayor. This site is located within the Cypress Key MXD. Here's an aerial showing the site. The proposed modifications to the site include an addition of a three-hundred-square-foot outdoor seating area south of building one, and it's highlighted here in red. Widening of sidewalk to eight feet in this area to meet village code requirements. Modify the configuration of the public gathering area between this building B one and B two by relocating the approved art piece and reduce the number of trees in this area from eight trees to one tree. And seven trees have been relocated to the landscape area to the north, south buffer, and to the foundation plantings of building A. The new location of the art and public places is highlighted here in green. It's a very minimal shift westward, and then they'll have, they have a bit of an enhancement where you have the semicircle kind of framing that art piece where it was previously located just in a brick-paved area. So, the planning and zoning commission approved this application at their prior meeting by a vote of four to zero. Staff is recommending approval, and here's a little bit more of a blow-up of this area, and you can see the little bit, you know, more there is an enhanced framing of where that art piece will be, and this is outdoor seating here at the, I think, proposed Chipotle. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, the applicant like to make some comments?
No comments, just here to answer any questions.
Are you satisfied the way it was presented by staff? Okay, thank you. Before we take comments from members on council, Diane, any prior public comments on this agenda item? No? Ray, we have any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I have no public comment card submitted on agenda item R three, but if anyone here would like to? No, saying none, I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R three. Take comments from members on council.
My only question is, how long you expected it to get done?
I think our CO, if we get approval tonight, it looks like it's going to be aimed at January.
Okay, thank you.
That's good.
Just one quick comment. Thank you for relocating the trees and not just removing them.
Absolutely.
If there are no other comments, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor? Any polls? We have no polls. Diane, let the record show agenda item R three was approved five zero. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay, all right. Agenda item R four, I guess this is a, we had a discussion to consider a revised village council policy regarding attendance requirements for our citizen advisory boards. I think we're gonna get an update from Keith on this.
Thank you, Mayor. We took the direction from council at the last meeting regarding a leave of absence basically for active military from your your citizen advisory boards, and the amended policy is before you for your consideration and approval.
Can you just review what the amendment is?
I'm sorry.
It's five G, I can get a minute, sorry.
Five. Section five at the top of page two is where we talk about the excused absences. We have added five G deployment or other commitment as a result of active duty service in the United States military. That would be considered now an excused.
Okay, so we made an excuse, but we didn't change the number of our occurrences or something like that? So it's still three?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I think because each committee meets at different times, yeah.
But, okay, so we can, we need to take a vote to approve this?
Yes, we would need a motion, and this need to be approved by motion if the council wants to adopt it.
I'll just say that I think we should go forward with this, but we should reserve the right to revisit this down the road if, to see how it actually works out. We always have that option. Okay.
Documents, they're always, they're always.
I just wanted to look at and just understand what impacts, if there are any, as a result of this, how it really works. Because our military structure now, and I think I mentioned this before, our reserve component really have, they have what we call active duty missions, okay? And there's reconfiguration, particularly in the army, on how that allocation works. So, the result of that is more and more reserve component soldiers are being mobilized. Because one of the rules that changed out of the first Gulf War was, before that, they wanted to mobilize. because they, one of the rules that changed out of the first Gulf War was, before that, they wanted to mobilize members of reserve component, they had to mobilize the entire unit. That changed where they can mobilize individuals in that unit who have certain skill sets and certain experience that they need to be, yeah, instead of the whole, so it's changed the landscape there, it, it has a different kind of impact than heavy pull. That's the only reason I'm saying, let's just see how this works out.
Yeah, and I, I think the language or other commitment was intended to try and capture things other than a full-blown deployment.
And that's mostly what's happening, individual deployments, okay, so with that, if there are no other questions or comments, um, I don't think this is, do we, do we have any pre, uh, comments on, no? Ray, anyone have their hand raised?
No, Mayor.
No comment card submitted on agenda item R four, so I'm going to close public comment on that agenda item and ask for a motion if there is one.
We'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item R four, second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, Diane, uh, Diane, let the record show, agenda item R four was approved, uh, five zero. Um, before we adjourn, we have no further business this evening with, uh, for the council. I'd just like to wish all members on council and all of our citizens out there to have a happy and blessed holiday season and, um, we'll see you next year. We are.